All right, do I have a certification of proceedings?
I recommend that the closed meeting be concluded. The Board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the closed meeting be concluded, and the Board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes.
I'll move that the school board uphold the superintendent's recommendation for readmission in student case number 071116-01 and 02.
And a second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board uphold the superintendent's recommendation for readmission in student case number 071116-01 and 071116-02. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes. I am glad to welcome Jack and Ryan, and that's like out of a Tom Clancy novel, I think, right? Boy Scouts here who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen, if you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're now going to move into special presentations for this evening, and I would ask that Coach Fisher and Coach Jones, if you all would please come down. Is this on? All right, great. I have a brief statement here to read. Under Coach Fisher's guidance, the Falkir High School wrestling team has won the Class 4A state title for two consecutive years. We recognized several FHS wrestlers last month who had state wins, one student earning his third state title, certainly due in part to Coach Fisher's training and preparation. Coach Jones led the indoor track team and the cross-country team to a second-place state win this year, with many runners earning gold and breaking state records individually or as relay teams. As I was preparing for this meeting, I read the outdoor track team had already performed well, winning gold in the 3200 relay.
Relay.
All right. And Unique London, she earned gold in the girls' shot put competition. Please join us as we congratulate these outstanding coaches who have trained and motivated their teams to be leaders and who have guided them to so many athletic achievements.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Coach.
Congratulations. Glad you actually got to come, so we could give it to you.
Perfect. That's great. All right. Well deserved. I have a few announcements for this evening on upcoming meetings. that was this Thursday is canceled. Chairman's night will be Monday, July 25 at 5:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. Anybody interested may sign up for that with our clerk. There will be a school board work session Monday, July 25 at 6:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a Building Committee meeting Thursday, July 28 at 8:30 in the School Administration Conference Room. And the next school board meeting will be on Monday, August 8 at 7:00 p.m., right back here in the Falcon Room. Are there any other meetings that were not on our—
Hey, Donald, you gonna be able to make that Building Committee meeting because I will be at the other workshop.
Right. Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay. Okay, we got it covered.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Great. Community involvement is an important component of a successful school division, and the school board recommends—welcomes public input. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personal or personnel—we'll just skip that for right now. Was there anybody signed up to speak this evening? No? Okay. We'll just skip through that then, as long as there's nobody. We're going to move right into Board Member reports. You have the Building and the Personnel Committee minutes in your agenda, but we will start down here with Ms. Grove on School Board Member reports.
Personnel Committee, we are not meeting this month, and last month we've already talked about what we did at that. Building Committee, I'll take a couple of them, and Duke can follow—finish up.
Okay. All right.
I know if it's not finished, or they're working on the parking lot at Southeastern, and we will be adding—how many spaces? I forget. Yeah. We'll be adding parking spaces at Southeastern, and they'll be ready for November general election. Yay. The roof replacement, the project for this summer is completed. They rolled through that, and I think everybody's happy with that. And the wastewater treatment plant at Mary Walter, we are still working with WSA and Falkir County General Services to obtain a consultant, and hopefully that consultant will come up with some long-range plans as to the fix down there. And I had the opportunity to tour our two Warrington Middle Schools, Warrington and Taylor. We had a good group, I thought, for the modernization committee, and I think we're working on a tour now of Auburn next month, and hopefully then, are we still going to go to Frederick County? And when that project is a little closer to finish. So it seemed like an excited group and an interested group that's going to work on this, so I'm excited to see where we go. And I'll leave you the rest of them, Duke.
Okay. Just a couple more projects that we're working on. Larger projects, I should say. Here at Falkir High School, we still have the sprucing up that's going on in the annex and also up in the locker room area, I think, as well, in the hallways or something. We're doing some more painting and cleaning it up up there. And also up in the northern end, up at Claude Thompson—did I misspeak?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Up at Claude Thompson, we do have a drain field repair, partial replacement project that's ongoing up there. And are we finished up there yet on that one?
No.
Right. Right.
Because roots are—
Yeah, we have roots from a huge maple tree, I think, that has gotten into the underground system. So we will continue to make repairs and it'll be a partial replacement of some units up there. And I think that's all for the major issues or projects that we have.
The annex.
I said the annex.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was asleep.
Mr. Blatt, do you have any other reports?
No, I do not, sir.
Mr. Mason?
It's not a report, but I want to commend the Destination Imagination Teams from Cedar Lee and the other two schools in the county. I lost my email that had the specifics, so I apologize.
Pierce? Was it Pierce?
I couldn't remember. I remember Cedar Lee because the girls were so excited the night that we met there.
And I can't remember the other one.
Coleman.
Coleman.
For job well done.
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you. Ms. Sloan?
Thank you. We have a piece coming out of our Finance Committee that I think I'll wait to go ahead, and Prashant is going to give us an overview. We did get a immediate release memo, July 8, from the Office of the Governor. Prashant is going to review that, and then I have a few comments that I'll make after that regarding the $266.3 million short of forecast coming out from the Governor's office, so we'll talk through that. Dr. Jek and I together will be at Osborne High School on Thursday. The Virginia Board of Education is seeking input on initiatives regarding the profile of a Virginia graduate, which I know is near and dear to all of our hearts, including the changes to the high school graduation requirements, the future accreditation models, and some things that have to do with ESSA, Virginia's Accountability System, and recommendations regarding the SOQs. They're having a series of public hearings, which I think we all appreciate all across the state. The one closest to us is this Thursday, July 14, at Osborne High School at 6:30, and so Dr. Jek and I will be there representing Falkir County together. Also, next week is—I am pleased to represent Falkir County School Board at the second-largest VSBA conference that we hold across the state. The largest, of course, is in the fall, that I believe we all go to. We were all together last year, just before—just after the election, so that was exciting to be together. It will—it has 40 mini workshops highlighting the best practices from across Virginia on topics including curriculum and instruction, school law, STEM education, special programs, and more. And many of the comments that came out of this last year were that this was—the best conference of the year. So I'm looking forward to that. It's in Richmond next Tuesday on the 19th, and I'll provide a report when I come back from that conference. Looking forward to it. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jek?
Several things. There's a lot going on this summer, as you probably know. There's STEM camps, Camp Invention, the Outdoor Explore Camps, Summer Quest, Summer School Remediation, Camp Moss Hollow, and the Ark Music Camps. But our staff has also been very busy. You may have heard that FCPS was awarded the VTSS Trailblazer Award by the Virginia Department of Education, and that'll be awarded at the Justice Classrooms, Not Courtrooms—criminal Justice Classrooms, Not Courtrooms workshop, which will be in Richmond, July 27 to 28. I'll be attending. I think there's a few Board members will be attending that, so we'll get to see—hear some really good stuff about some different ways of disciplining and helping students, and we'll be receiving an award at the same event, so that's really great. Thus far, we've had 532 seats and over 30 different professional development opportunities, so our teachers are busy, our administrators are busy. There's a lot going on relative to staff development, including youth mental health, first aid, dyslexia, dyscalculia, dysgraphia. Engineering is elementary for first-grade teachers, closing the achievement gap, and then also Librarians Roundtable with our colleagues from Culpeper County, just to name a few. And finally, I mentioned this at the last work session, but we had a very successful Administrative Academy, very good experience for everyone, I felt. There was plenty of mini workshops relative to high-yield instructional strategies. We also heard from Susan Barrett on tiered systems of support. I received training on the new COP Sync 9/11 system, which I talked to you about at the last meeting. And of course, we unveiled our book that we published. So it's been a busy summer. There's a lot going on relative to staff development and professional development, and lots of opportunities for students. I think that's one thing I'm perhaps most proud of in the last few years, is that the summer offerings have grown exponentially, so there's a lot more opportunities for kids in a lot of different areas, so I'm really happy about that.
Great. Thank you. Before we hear from Mr. Sressa about finance, I did want to point out that one of the things we've been monitoring in the Finance Committee has been health insurance fund. We won't really know the full tabulation of where we stand on that, but, you know, we've continued to monitor that, so I think we will get a report on where we stand in terms of our health insurance fund for the past fiscal year fairly soon. But certainly, it has not moved out of the yellow category to red. We are in yellow to green, so that was good news. I also say that the Falkir Excellence in Education Foundation has been discussing a lot of grant opportunities and a lot of things they're doing. Two things of note. One is the New Teacher Dinner coming up on the 11th.
August.
Of August. Yes, sorry. August. And we have a big crop of new teachers coming in, and certainly looking through the gift items and the sort of welcome gifts that people, our new teachers, will receive. I think it's going to be a great evening. I encourage all of us to go. Second is on the Outdoor Lab Grant. There was some concern about making sure that there was—right connections were being made to the Building Committee, so I've asked for them to—
Oh, okay.
—make sure that the Building Committee gets a copy of what they're talking about with that, because there's some contingencies on the building when different improvements or things are done. And so just the timing in terms of grant awarding, there's some sensitivities there, so please be aware of that.
Very good.
Also, in the next couple weeks, I'll be attending a thank you reception for the Blue Ridge Orthopedics who have donated to the VPI program, so I'll be going to that and thanking them. But I just—it just reiterates that this community is really putting some money into this school division—
Absolutely.
—and to our students and to our teachers particularly, so we're very thankful for all that they've done. So I think that's all I have to say on that. Anything else? All right. We will move into our Financial Management Report. Mr. Sressa will present that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Dr. Jek, I'll be describing the Financial Health and the Financial Management Report through May 31, 2016. In the School Operating Fund, our revenues are at 88%, and our expenditures are at 80%. We're tracking this closely. We just had a Finance Committee meeting, and so now we're in the process of tracking where we're going to fall at the year end. We're still in track to collect about $12 million in sales tax from the state. In our School Asset Fund, we're in a positive balance. The total revenue is at 94%, and we've, to date, spent 49% of the budget. In the School Textbook Fund, we've collected 97% of the amended amount. The revenues and expenditures are both tracking very closely to the previous years, and that account is also in a positive balance. And as far as school nutrition, it's still tracking in the same positive direction, so at this time, we're not projecting that we'll have to draw down from fund balance. Revenues are at 83%, expenditure at 74%. That's the Financial Management Report. And I also have an announcement that I'd like to share with you in regards to what's happening with state revenue. So on July 8, the Governor released some information, and today Steve Staples, the Superintendent at the state level, also issued a message to school divisions in regard to what's going on with the budget. So the total revenues, this is individual income, corporate income, sales tax, they're at 1.8% below the official budget estimates. If—per law, if it's greater than 1%, they have to what's called—do what's called a reestimate of the general fund by September 1. So what that means to us is that there's a shortfall. That's the $266 million that you were referencing earlier, but what this means to us is we were going to get a portion of state funding to fund our 2% increase for the year. Remember, we talked about that?
Right.
So that—this means that there—and the words that Mr. Staples uses is, "They're on hold." So nothing is officially happening. There's more information going to come out on August 26, but at this point, I just want everyone to be aware that there is a possible risk there of that line item being a shortfall in our state revenue category. The total amount for your reference is $327,000. Staff will be working on the backend, and we'll be developing, you know, some ideas to basically see what we can do about them, and we'll come back to Finance Committee, report more information. So that's the high-level information. I can forward this information to Ginger, and she can send out this press release to you all, and if you have any questions, you can let me know.
Thanks. Just a couple comments. We had talked in the Finance Committee about, well, you know, we're not going to know anything until August 26. Maybe we don't even talk about it tonight, right? But we decided, let's talk about it tonight, so that you're aware that it's a possibility. The memos go out, people start spinning, people start thinking, ah, you know, what's going to happen to us here in Falkir County? What happens—what happens when there's a shortfall? So we wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, but there'll be nothing that we can find out until this August 26. So we talked about together that the next board meeting would be on the 12th and the potentially—
September.
—September 12, sorry. By that point, then, we will be able to fully digest whatever is stated on the 26th, hoping that it comes through that way. And, you know, just kind of off-the-record comment, but on the record as we're talking here, this is—the education governor, so we're hoping that maybe he would do something lovely, like hold public schools harmless from this type of a shortfall, and come out and leave his legacy as the education governor, so we're hoping that. Of course, another thing they could do is, you know, hit the rainy day fund and those type of things. But the specifics of how it will specifically affect us, I don't think we're going to have anything to report until the 26th, but we didn't want to wait until then to have the discussion, you know, here, so that everyone knew it's a possibility. So it is, for Falkir County, $327,000, and then on the 12th, at our board meeting, the meeting notes are there, then we would have some discussion, be able to talk about it a little more clearly.
Yeah, and I think the Finance Committee's recommendation is this, that this could mean some—uh, it could mean all of that, some of that, or none of that, meaning we don't know which scenario. Certainly, staff is preparing for whatever those scenarios are, because there's a lot of tools that the Governor and the state have at their discretion to be able to mitigate any harm to the school divisions. And then after that, if there is a needed response, I think we're going to be preparing what that may be from our end, but we're not at that point.
Right.
So—but we did want to make sure everybody was very familiar with that. You know, I—this press release came in on a Friday, on a holiday week, so it was kind of under the radar, but I think it's pretty important. These are the types of things you would release on a Friday, but I think we should highlight it on a Monday at a school board meeting, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yep.
Ms. Downs?
Bring us some good news. What's going on?
Lots going on. Good evening. Following is a brief summary from the Human Resources Department. We're in high gear for recruitment. Currently, for certified positions, we are still in need of 25 teachers. What we're looking for is math, foreign language, special education, and we're doing some creative recruitment over the next month to try to maybe even get some career switchers in for our math positions. For classified, on our list tonight, we had 12 and 1/2, but that—there's more. We have bus drivers in school nutrition positions. So this Wednesday, at Mary Walter Elementary School, we're doing what's called a progressive hiring fair, where we are literally taking all the steps that it would take to hire, to onboard bus drivers and school nutrition and bus aides. That means they can be interviewed. If they pass the interview, we then can go to orientation, have fingerprinting on-site, so we can start helping to facilitate the hiring process quicker.
Oh.
In addition, we're doing some—we have a movie theater release. We have an ad that'll be in the Culpeper Theaters for bus drivers. We also have radio clips that will be released in the next week. We'll be at the county fair with our banner as well at the ring. And then we're looking at being located in some southern counties like Madison, Orange, and to recruit there as well, to see, if people are driving this way, how can we get them to stop here? So that's pretty—the big item on the human resources plate this year so far, or this month. Any questions?
Is that typical of where you would be at this time?
Good question. It is a little higher at this point. We are having some difficulty attracting classified workers, but I do also believe that's because of the job market that's around us as well. I hope that was good news. At least we have a plan.
It's just evidence that between building, finance, and human resources, it might— school might be out, but certainly this is high tide for most of you all.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. This time, we'll move on to consent agenda.
I'll move that the school board approve the consent agenda, which includes the monthly bills and payroll, the AP Human Geography textbook adoption, the revision of Policy 1-6.8, citizen participation, and the personnel actions, which include the reappointment of 967 certified employees and 575 classified, the newly—new and newly hired—hiring of 19 certified and 1 classified, and the termination of 27 certified and 10 classified employees.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the monthly bills and payroll, the AP Human Geography textbook adoption, the revision of Policy 1-6.8, citizen participation, and personnel actions, which include the following: reappointments of 967 certified and 575 classified personnel, the newly hiring of 19 certified and 1 classified personnel, and the termination of 27 certified and 10 classified personnel. Any discussion? Just for everybody's benefit in the audience, a lot of these things have been talked through before in other meetings, which is why they're on consent agenda. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, and the motion passes. Thank you very much. We now move on to information items, the ESL and Latin textbook adoption.
Dr. Mitchell has not let Ms. Hoover go yet?
No.
She's in a dual role now, huh? Yeah.
Good stuff. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Dr. Jek, I come tonight with the sixth and final language of our year-long textbook adoption. Before I start that, I did want to let you know that we started first day of StarTalk today. Had an awesome day. We're at Taylor Middle School. We invite you to come anytime the next three weeks, and you'll be getting an official invitation for our final program on Thursday, the 28th, at 11 o'clock in the morning at Taylor.
What languages?
Turkish and Arabic.
Turkish and Arabic.
So we had a full program, so it's really exciting. I'm going to start with the addendum to the Latin adoption. This is just a minor issue. With the AP Latin adoption, the class is based on the Virgil and the Caesar selections, and in the packet that was presented, the Virgil—the teachers, the class needs the Latin version of the book and the English. And somehow, the Latin was omitted from the original packet. It was included in the cost, so there's no additional cost, but I'm just amending the packet to make sure that the title is there, so that when we go back and say, what are the adopted textbooks, that the actual Latin, which is the more important of the two probably, is included. And if you would consider moving that to action tonight, I would appreciate that consideration. And again, that—the cost is—there's no additional cost. It was included. And Kettle Run is the only school that does not already have the class sets of those books. Is there any questions about Latin?
There won't be additional shipping? It was their omission?
It was—it was—it was just an omission from the packet that came to the Board, so it wasn't left off the quote or anything, so it should all be—all be the same. Any additional questions? Okay.
Do we have any questions?
No.
Okay. And now I bring the first FCPS ESL textbook adoption recommendations. The ESL program, as you know, has been growing and changing. The population is—has really exploded, especially in the middle and high school and the— The population is, has really exploded, especially in the middle and high school in the last several years. And we have found a great need for high-quality, consistent instructional materials across the county for this group of students, especially for our newcomer students who have just come from another country, they don't speak the language at all. The teachers were really struggling to find appropriate materials. And over the last few years, with the rise of ESL populations nationwide, there are more materials available that are specifically designed for this group of students. Especially challenging are the middle school and high school newcomers, because their literacy levels are varied, many are much lower than the other English-speaking peers who have been here since kindergarten, and the teachers have had a very difficult time trying to make sure that we can meet the needs of those students. The committee that considered these books included, all ESL teachers in the county were invited, we had elementary, middle, and high school teachers, myself, we had Molly Hess, the assistant principal at Claude Thompson. They have, Claude Thompson and Mary Walter go back and forth for the highest ESL population in the county, so I thought it was a good idea to include an administrator from one of those schools. And then we had a parent and community member who was also a former ESL student at Liberty High School, so that was a good addition to the committee, because she had the perspective of being an ESL student and also now having a child in the program. The process that we followed was very similar to the process of the other adoptions. We started back in August, gathered all the information, we spent several months completing a preliminary review of the materials. We had, the publishers came in the first time in December, but given that this was the first adoption of its kind, we decided to have an additional review and then an additional publisher presentation that was in June, so that the teachers in the group could make sure that we were making the right decision. And then the public review was June 27th and ended today. And then for the selections that the committee is recommending, in elementary, a lot of the materials are reading programs, and at the end of the process, the committee decided not to adopt a reading program, because what we are looking for is to supplement what are the reading program that we have, and we know that there is a reading adoption coming next year, so we are hopeful to have some ESL participation in that adoption committee, and that there will be ESL materials included in that adoption. So the committee is recommending for ESL adoption, some supplemental items to reach the students at the lower levels who need more language support, including Sing With Me, Language Song, Big Books. These books come, they're multi-leveled by proficiency level for the students, so a newcomer would start at Level A and then go up to Level F. They are, come with music, and they're very fun and engaging for the students. There is a newcomer kit that is designed just for students who are newly arrived in elementary school, that includes a variety of items to support those students. And then the teachers also are recommending the Inside Phonics Kit, which is specific to reading, and for older students in the elementary school. And this is a real need, because oftentimes, if you have a fifth-grade newcomer who's not reading in English, the materials in the fifth-grade classroom are not there for that student, so this will help with that need. So those are the recommendations for the elementary. And the middle and high school have a little bit more in what they're recommending for adoption, because in the middle and high school, there are more ESL resource courses, or in the high school level, there are ninety-minute blocks that they are in the ESL classroom. So they are recommending the Inside the USA Newcomers Kit, which is similar to the elementary, but geared for older students. The Inside Phonics Kit, which is the reading kit again, and we have had a huge need for that in the high schools especially, because the materials for those students are not there. And then the Cengage National Geographic Inside Series and the Pathways Series. And these come in what's called the Fundamentals, all the way up to a Level Four. The committee is only recommending the Fundamentals and Level One, because when the students are able to access the higher levels, they are transitioned into the content area classes, so their support becomes more of a collaborative support in the classroom. And then the final item that the committee is recommending for, for the middle and high school are theme book sets that are content-based, that relate to all of the materials, because they just do not have reading materials in the high schools and middle schools at the reading levels that the teachers need for this group of students. Along with all these materials, and these are all through Cengage National Geographic, they are giving all of the ESL teachers full online access to their My NG Connect, which is an amazing teacher resource that has lesson planning, all of the National Geographic photos, graphics. It's a, it's a really excellent resource for the teachers, and it even has a calendar that if you have a snow day, you just click a button and it bumps everything to the next day. So that is included in here, and they included that free of charge for all the teachers for seven years. Their typical license is six years, but since our adoption is seven, they extended it to seven. And that is all that I have. Do you have any questions?
Do you need that one to go to action tonight?
If the board would move it to action tonight, that would be excellent, but as soon as, as soon as you feel that you're ready.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I will move to school bus video monitoring systems ordinance. Fisher?
I know you don't usually see me up here. Ms. Born is pushing me out of my comfort zone tonight. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, Dr. Jack. I'm here this evening to request the school board, request the Falkir County Board of Supervisors, adopt an ordinance authorizing the school division or a private contractor to install and operate video monitoring systems on our school buses. This is for the purpose of recording traffic violations by drivers who are illegally passing stop-school buses, and imposing a civil penalty for the violations of $250. And this happens more than we'd like to think, people passing our stop-arm lights. This is basically a stop-arm camera system. The Code of Virginia requires that a person driving a motor vehicle shall stop when approaching from any direction, front, back, side, a clearly marked school bus that is loading or unloading their children, until the persons are clear of the bus and the bus is back in motion. Previously, several localities were using stop-arm cameras, a little history on this. It came to a halt for a little while, there was, they were trying to determine, the citations were being mailed, and there was some discussion on whether that was the way to do it, or maybe they should be delivered by a sheriff or a process server. So in December 2015, the school board, you guys, supported the House and Senate bills intended to amend this section of the code to allow the summons for violators to be mailed. We wanted to mail them. So effective July 1, 2016, the amended Code of Virginia 46 dot 2 dash 844, should've brought my glasses, was passed to allow citations to be mailed. So this is now back on board for all these folks that were using this before. As you already know, and I would be remiss if I didn't say this, school buses are one of the safest modes of transportation out there, but because of this, our children are in danger. Unloading and loading our children is the most dangerous time for them when we're transporting them. So any step in the right direction, this program takes us there. We train, and we train, our drivers are excellent, we train the students, but this is one more step to help protect our kids. So, and I would like to ask that they move this to action this evening, so we can move forward with this. And if you have any questions, you know, I'm here, and Ms. Born is definitely here.
Can I just add, I think we already, we've got, we're ready to go on this. We just need Board of Supervisors to give their, to approve the resolution, and then we're ready.
Anyone else?
And how quickly do you think it could be?
Well, we have the, if I got the right date, it looks like the Board of Supervisors meeting is in August, August 11th, I believe. And then we have to have the public hearing, we have to finalize the contract, there is a lot of public awareness that goes on out here, building up everybody's awareness out. And it looks like maybe the beginning of November, if all goes well.
Oh.
Thanks.
Is there a reason why it has to be tonight and not at our work session?
Boss says no.
What other counties are using this on the, on the arm?
There's different brands out there, but there is Richmond City, Falls Church, Alexandria, there's quite a few in Virginia, Texas, all over the place. Richmond City is big, Maryland, Montgomery County's using it.
So these are outward-facing cameras, nothing to do with filming inside the camera, inside the bus? That's something separate?
Exactly. We have cameras on all of our buses on the inside at this time. This is strictly, it is a camera mounted on the left side of the bus, there is seven cameras inside this one mounting, so it gets a huge, you could have a four or a six-lane road and still be able to capture the people that are running your lights. Thank you very much.
Please note that there's a couple requests for action items tonight.
Yeah, I'm trying.
All right, we will move to a revision of Policy 4-2.2, Emergency Preparedness and Response Plans.
As you just said, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Jack, this is a revision that the state has made to this policy effective July 1. And the change in it is a revision to the drills that our schools will implement in the coming school year. And they're in the process right now of updating their materials to give when kids come back to school. The change is, in the past, for many years, the fire drills have been one fire drill for each week of the first twenty days of school, and then one fire drill a month thereafter. And the lockdown drills have changed over the past couple of years. About three years ago, we didn't have any, four years ago, then we went to one per year, and then it changed to two per year in the last couple of years, one in September and one in January. This revision to the code changes it to be equal to fire drills. So a lockdown drill will now be two lockdown drills the first twenty days of school, and two for the remainder of the year, and fire drills will be the same, two for the first twenty days of school and two for the remainder of the year. So it's reducing fire drills and increasing lockdown drills. And we would ask that you consider, move this to your next meeting for action. We're not asking you to take action on it tonight, since it is a change in policy.
It was two for the first twenty days, for both of these, fire and lockdown, and then-
Two for the remainder of the year.
Two for the remainder of the year.
So it's a total of four fire drills and four lockdown drills.
But two for the remainder of the year, is that specific to September and January, or is that our discretion?
It's at the school's discretion. So for the first twenty days, the school can decide to do one a week, and do two of them fire drills in alternating weeks, and two of them lockdown, or they can do two in one week, one of each, and not have some drills in certain weeks. But it's at their discretion, and then over the course of the year, whenever.
The monthly fire drills, those are now gone.
It does, absolutely, because we go from approximately twelve fire drills a year to four, but we do, from two lockdown drills to four.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions?
Consent?
I'm fine with that consent at the work session.
Yes, 7:20.
Look at it.
I'm fine with that.
If you want to pull it off, we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Finn will present a revision to 7-3.1, Student Code of, Code of Student Conduct.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Jack. I had to laugh when I saw myself last on the agenda. I was, I was like, okay, I got it, I got them. I wonder why, but you know what they say, dude, say the best for last, that's right. So, so I am here, as, as Mr. Gorg said, to discuss with the board revisions to the school board policy 7-3.1, Code of Student Conduct. This year, you know, the revisions are fairly minor. The most significant one, in my mind, is the first one, administrative requirements for addressing misconduct, and this has to do with the reports of bullying, harassment, threats, or intimidation. And essentially, what this does is it adds this requirement in that administrators do need to complete this form, which we did include. We made this form very user-friendly, so that it can be completed on computer, it will not take long, and the routing then goes to both the principal of the school and my office of Student Services at Central. The reason this is so important is that we see a lot of examples through student discipline of bullying, harassment cases, and then we go back and investigate and look into it, and we can't find any written evidence of the investigation or what our actions were. We can get anecdotal and verbal stuff, but we see examples across the country of the Office of Civil Rights really looking into these matters with students with disabilities and just in other groups along the lines of gender. And they're really targeting school divisions that are not showing and demonstrating due diligence in matters of harassment. And so this is simply an effort to really document what I know we do, but we can't pull it up, so this will allow us to very quickly reference our due diligence in cases of harassment. So that's what that's about, and that's probably the most significant change in this policy revision. We did change some language, it's very minor, investigations and questioning of students. We noticed the terminology we used, use the term criminal code versus the Code of Virginia, so we did change that in the policy where it appeared. In the repeat offenses pages in the Code of Student Conduct, what we found is that it was very confusing for administrators, and we judged that based on the number of calls we got with questions about, okay, if it's two Tier Ones and two Tier Twos and one Tier Three, what do we do? So we streamlined this to make it more logical, more intuitive, and user-friendly, so that's what you'll see in that section. Under the other offenses category, we did separate bomb threat and other significant threat to safety into two separate categories to provide clarity and to provide more detail to include threatening text messages and social media messages. And we found this again, and this is how we determine our revisions, is what are the things that we're struggling, our administrators are struggling with that are causing consistent problems, and those are the things we target in the revisions. So that's it for this year, they're more along the lines of refinements and improvements. I had come in this evening wanting to ask the board to move this to action tonight, but I learned that there were some difficulties with you guys getting the supporting documentation for this policy revision. So what I'd say is if there's any discomfort with that request by the board, I'm completely fine if we could move this to consent agenda for the, the-
Work session.
Work session at the end of the month, that would be fine. What we're, really, the only concern is we're working against timelines for printing, that's what we're always up against, so, but if that's where your comfort level is, that's fine, we'll make it work. And that's all I have, if there are any questions.
This is printed, that each administrator-
No, this is, the revision of the policy in total is important to have completed before we print the Code of Student Conduct. And so that's kind of a major project, you know, and we don't do that until we have board approval. But I believe that if you moved-
Does anybody have any questions? I do have one question. Are we going to be approving the regulations and the policy, or just the policy?
Nah, the regulation was there just simply to provide information. I wanted you to see the form, which really is in regulation, but I wanted you to...
We don't do regulations.
Yes.
I mean, a regulation.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Good question. Thanks.
Right.
I'll move that the school board move information items thirteen A and thirteen B to action items fourteen B and fourteen C.
Second. Been a motion and a second that the school board move information items thirteen A and thirteen B to action items fourteen B and fourteen C. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to our action items.
Mr. Chair, I'm motioning to the school board adopt the resolutions approving and accepting $775,500 from the PATH Foundation for Faukeer County Public School Projects.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board adopt the resolution approving and accepting $775,500 from the PATH Foundation for Faukeer County Public School Projects. Any discussion?
Just wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I have the motion here, I can sign upon approval, and this comes with approval, recommendations from the Finance Committee as well. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes. Great, I'll sign that.
I'll move that the school board approve the proposed ESL and Latin textbook adoptions.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board approve both the ESL and the Latin textbook adoption. Any discussion? Is there a sensitivity on the time for this? I didn't really ask about. Here's my concern, is that the comments period for ESL just ended today, right? And, not that it's a big deal that we don't, it's not often, but just if, if we could wait, I would prefer to wait, but if, if everybody else here wants to move forward, that's fine.
Were, was there public comments allowed throughout the entire process, when you had all the documents out for review?
Okay. All right.
They were there. I'm okay with it.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and the motion passes. Okay.
And I'll move that the school board approve the proposed school bus video monitoring system ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much for coming, thank you everybody for your hard work tonight.